I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Which brings us to proclamations and presentations, which we have not today. Which brings us to swearing by city attorney, disclosure of export communication. Ms. Thank you, Madam Mayor. If anyone present today wishes to speak or give any testimony on any quasi judicial matters, you will need to be sworn in looking at the agenda that's tab numbers four through seven. If you would please stand at this time and raise your right hand. Do solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you. Counsel, if there's any export communications that would be appropriate, I'd just like to say. Saying that, I'll pause for a second.
I met with Besh and about the green property.
That would be tab number seven. And as for tab number seven, I received certain several letters and communications as well regarding that project.
Say a few on the green property.
I don't believe I have any. Back to you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Which brings us to reading of all ordinances and resolutions and disclosure. Just go back.
Thank you, Mayor. We have four ordinances and one resolution. Ordinance two thousand twenty dash zero six, an ordinance of the City of Tavares amending the boundaries of the city by annexing approximately one hundred nineteen point five seven acres of land located at two seven five two one, State Road nineteen, rezoning said property from Lake County Agricultural District A to City of Tavares Residential Single Family RSF two and City of Tavares Wetlands Preservation Area WPA, subject to the rules, regulations, and obligations ordained by the City of Tavares Council, providing for severability, providing for effective date. Ordinance two thousand and twenty dash zero seven, an ordinance of the City of Tavares, Florida, amending the Tavares Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map twenty twenty, providing for a change of future land use designation on approximately one hundred and nineteen point five seven acres of land located at two seven five two one, State Road nineteen, from county rural transition to city low density LOW and wetland and conservation CONS, providing for severability and conflicts, providing for transmittal, and providing for effective date. Ordinance two thousand and twenty dash zero eight, an ordinance of the City of Tavares amending the boundaries of the city by annexing approximately one point seven two acres of land located at the northwest corner of State Road nineteen and Slum Haywood Avenue, rezoning said property from Lake County Agricultural District A to City of Tavares Highway Commercial C two, subject to the rules, regulations, and obligation ordained by the City of Tavares Council, providing for severability, providing for effective date. Ordinance two thousand and twenty dash zero nine, an ordinance of the City of Tavares, Florida, amending the Tavares Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map twenty twenty, providing for a change of future land use designation on approximately one point seven two acres of property from county urban medium density to city commercial COM, the property generally located at the northwest corner of State Road nineteen and Slum Haywood Avenue, providing for severability and conflicts and providing for effective date. And resolution two thousand and twenty dash ten, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Tavares, Florida, vacating a portion of the thirty-foot unnamed road lying north of lot twenty-eight and lot forty, as shown in the plat- plateland of Lane and Jackson and others, as recorded in Platinum seven, page fifty-two, public records of Lake County, Florida, and releasing the easement as reported in O R book one through six-two, pages one six nine five through one seven zero zero, public records from Lake County, Florida, subject to the rules and regulations ordained by the City of Tavares Council, providing for effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Noack. Which brings us to consent agenda. Anyone want to call anything, put a consent agenda? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll say. You have a motion second, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Which brings us to resolutions, tab three. Resolution twenty twenty dash ten, the Palmer property, vacation of unnamed driveway and release of easement at the northwest corner of Slum Haywood Avenue and State Road nineteen. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mayor. This request is for a property that we'll be reviewing in a moment for annexation. The request is to vacate a portion of the thirty-foot unnamed road as shown on the plat- platof land of Lane and Jackson and others, lying north of Slum Haywood Avenue, west of State Road nineteen, and to release the inres- eres easement in favor of the City of Tavares that's recorded in Lake County public records. The owner of the property that includes the portions of the right way of the class is proposing commercial development. Prior to the development, the owner must vacate any public interest in the property. The city no longer requires an easement across the property as a result of the construction of Slum Haywood Avenue. And seen staff has verified with the utility department that no public utilities are in that right way. The portions of the road are unopened and unused, and this vacate and release of easement will remove the city's public interest and allow the applicant to pursue options to secure title to the property.
And the only thing I would add is that the, that right way went to the next property, to the next property, went all the way down, and we have vacated over time as requested. And there's this last remaining piece.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
The July sixteenth meeting, the planning zone board voted unanimously to recommend approval and staff recommends approval of resolution twenty twenty dash ten.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. And I haven't received any requests to speak from the public. And seeing no one indicating that, would you like to speak? Please come forward and state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Peter Pentzner. I'm an AIC certified planner with that group, or the planners, engineers, and surveyors on the project. The staff has done a good job summarizing that. I just liked to add to that to note that this right way is separated from Slum Haywood by approximately thirty feet, so it's not immediately adjacent. There are no utilities located within that area. It's not needed for a future expansion of Slum Haywood. And if you look at the maps that are in the staff report, you can see, for example, our property to the west of us, this, our property already extends further, has a larger right length because we're at the intersection, and we'll accommodate both existing utilities that are there at that intersection, if we're going to accommodate turn lanes in the future. And then I'm here to answer any questions, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to speak? I'm going to close public input. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion the second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Which brings us to ordinances. We have none at first reading today, so when we go to second reading. Tab four, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six, green property, annexation and rezoning, one hundred nineteen point five seven acres located at two seven five two one, State Road nineteen. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mayor. The subject property is one hundred nineteen point five seven acres located on State Road nineteen. The land consists of multiple parcels and includes an existing single-family home. The subject property is presently zoned as county agricultural district, and the applicant is proposing that the property be annexed and rezoned to city residential single-family RSF two. The exact location of wetlands will be determined in the field, and all wetlands greater than one acre in size will be designated as wetland preservation area. The survey submitted by the applicant indicates approximately sixty-six point two zero acres of wetland, and that's about fifty-five percent of the property. Any wetland that is proposed to be impacted by development is subject to Florida Department of Environmental Protection mitigation requirements. The proposed zoning of residential single-family is compatible with the surrounding zoning. The property is in close proximity to existing low-density single-family residential subdivisions that are older than the city limits of Tavares. The applicant at this time envisions developing the property as a residential subdivision consisting of approximately one hundred and thirty-three lots with a minimum width of sixty feet and a minimum square footage of sixty-five hundred square feet as required by the RSF two zoning. The annexation has been reviewed per the city's policy, and no undue negative fiscal impact is indicated. The environmental assessment submitted indicates the presence of protected species, gopher tortoises, and state permitting will be required to relocate those prior to development. No other adverse conditions have been indicated by the environmental assessment. The traffic study submitted does not indicate an impact to the level of service of surrounding roadways. There will be increased trips, obviously. The report recommends installation of a northbound left turn lane and a southbound right turn lane on State Road nineteen at the subdivision entrance. The applicant has supplied two Lake County schools for capacity reservation, and the city is currently processing a request for a comprehensive plan change for the, for property for Lake County rural transition, changing to City of Tavares low density. At the July sixteenth meeting, the planning and zoning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six, and staff recommends that the city council moves to approve of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Is the applicant present? Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Chuck Hyatt, Booth Ernst from Hyatt nine zero two Moore Sinclair Avenue here in Tavares. Just wanted to say real quick, the, the open space on this project, or the uplands, you know, not the wetlands, when you relay that to the one hundred and thirty-three lots, we're basically to, to an adjuvant's breaker. Also, Mike had mentioned DOT with the turn lanes. We are in negotiation right now with DOT to try to accommodate what they're actually going to require when we come up with replat, assuming you guys approve this. I'll be answering, answering your question, happy answering your questions that you may have after everybody's time.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt.
Thanks.
And may I just for the record, you always see some letters from various people, I think three or four of them. We have them, they were not asked to be read into the record. Obviously, if you want them read into the record, we could. Or you could take comments first, and if you want those letters read, we can read them. I just wanted you to know that we do have those letters if you want them read.
I'm going to go ahead and ask you, we're here to speak, to speak, and then we'll list the letters. First, Mr. Berry. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Counsel. Jay Scott Berry, Executive Director of the Tavares Chamber of Commerce, three hundred East Main Street. I am here representing over three hundred members, and not just our members, but I like to say I'm representing a lot of the businesses here in Tavares. And the addition of three, of one hundred and thirty-three homes and families into our city, and the impact that that will be on our businesses, and the growth that we can see through that is just exponential and a very, very exciting, good thing. So I'm urging you to approve this on behalf of all those people that are still in their businesses right now, working, and would benefit over the years from the addition of these people. Plus, I have reviewed the plan, I've known Mr. Fitzgerald, the securing of, I think it's sixty percent that remain into the environmental is very encouraging, so it's a really awesome project that we want to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Which brings me to Mr. Gonzalez. Would you please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Rick Gonzalez, I'm opposite three thirty-nine West Alfred. I'm a commercial land broker, and I've studied this property many times over the last few years, years. I think it's a perfect thing for this, bringing more people to town, which I really agree instead of to just bring more people to town, it's a good thing. And I was actually surprised that there was any expressions of opposition to it, to this plan. So I'm also a member of Lake One Hundred, which is a group of business people that are kind of managing Better, and as one of their representatives, I can't represent them today, but I am a member there, and it's, they're feeling awesome, like this is a great frontier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Which Ms. Wilson, just a second. I didn't get the email completely, one hundred, four, sorry. Mr. Yorden, if you'd please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Great, thank you. I'm John Reardon, Director of Marketing and Community Relations for community health centers at two one two East Main Street here in downtown Tavares. Over one hundred and thirty new homes mean new households contributing to the, to various tax base. It means short-term trades with building jobs and long-term prosperity. New households spending money not only in our downtown, but in our county. It means future local employees for our business community. We know that keeping the mileage rate low is a yearly battle. New homes contributing their fair share goes a long way to reaching that goal and help us achieve a lower tax rate. Let's continue that success by approving quality projects on private property with otherwise do nothing for the city while vacant, paying no taxes to the city yet being located in the city. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Which brings me to Ms. Bellton. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
I'm Tracy Bellton. Address is five twenty-five West Main Street, Tavares. I'm here, I'm also a member of Lake One Hundred who is in favor of this project. I did a little bit of research about availability of homes in the Tavares city limits at the present time that are available, between one hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty thousand are only thirty-three, between two hundred and fifty thousand and three hundred and fifty thousand are only twenty-four. So there's a definite need for us to increase the number of residential homes in this area. You have the hospitals going jointly to try to increase the number of nurses that we have for our hospitals. They're going to be looking for housing, and we want them in Tavares. Increase our tax base, increase our residential homes in this, in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bellton. And Counsel, Mr. Yonkers, would you like to come forward? Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Yes, you're welcome. One two six one nine Milwaukee Avenue. I used to drive down Highway nineteen quite a bit, then five sixty one. And nobody here, everybody wants all these properties to bring business to you, they're all downtown interests, real estate interests, and yet nobody talks about the traffic problems. And you, there was a fair mention that there's talk about trying to get an extra turn lane in, but nothing concrete. And I just, I'm amazed that you guys still go ahead and you approve these properties. Everybody here wants these properties in, but they don't care apparently about traffic conditions and the intersections and everything else. And I think you need to start standing up. You know, there's two county commissioners that just got thrown out, and probably some people in this room were involved in it. But the big thing that they made with some kind of nasty mailers was that they increased taxes. And that's the other issue, is that you better warn those folks how much their taxes are going to be when they move in. So please fix the traffic first, don't keep approving these, step up to the gate, you know, because otherwise you're going to be known as the traffic-clogged city of the county of Texas.
Thank you, Mr. Yonkers. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak before? Those public, please come forward, state your name and address, you have three minutes.
My name is Michael Carter. I live in forty-nine oh two Waters Gate Drive in Tavares. I'm up here as a citizen of Tavares and lived here just about approximately two years. This is a growing area, and we do want the area to grow. We do want development, but we don't want runaway development. We want it to grow responsibly, and we want it to grow reasonably, so we ask you to please take those things into consideration. What I would like to ask right now is just a little bit of clarification. On the map here, you show the proposed development. There's areas in blue on the map. Are those the wetland areas to which you were referring to earlier?
Please ask all your questions, and I'll have him answer your questions. So once your three minutes is over.
Okay.
I wouldn't be afraid to waste your time.
Okay. Could you go back to the previous map that you had shown? These areas here where those blue areas were, is all, is all of that area going to be zoned as low-density residential single-family?
And do you have any other questions?
I mean?
Any other questions? I know that he's going to answer them as soon as you're done.
They can answer that later. Okay, all right, that's a question. I have other questions, but those are probably the more with the other things that go on, so I'll go in, I'll sit down.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the audience who'd like to come up and give their input or ask questions? Then I'm going to close public comment with the audience. Mr. Fitzgerald, would you like to answer those questions now or wait until the letters are read into the record?
I can answer those now, Mayor. This is a conceptual plan, it is not a subdivision construction plan. As I've stated in our, in our staff report, wetland has to be field verified. Once it is field verified, it will not have a zoning of, of, of single-family residential. It'll have a zoning classification of wetland protection area. The blue on here just, it represents a combination of where stormwater retention may be, some natural water intrusion from the lake, and, and the green is obviously the consultation area.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Counsel, would you like the letters that were submitted read into the record?
I have them.
Okay. Could we please have those written to the record, please?
Yes, go ahead. You've got the letters, sir.
Okay. Do you want Rick, Rick Gonzalez's letter read, or is his testimony enough?
Rick, do you want your letter read, or are you good?
It's up to you. All right.
Go ahead and read it.
Okay. All right, I'll start with a letter from Tim Sullivan, President of Lake One Hundred. Dear Counsel members from the City of Tavares, on behalf of Lake One Hundred, we would like to respectfully offer our thoughts on the Green Reserve project. Lake One Hundred is a member organization committed to advancing economic development in Lake County by providing education, guidance, and leadership. Our membership represents over seventy-five of Lake County CEOs, top employers, and respected industry professionals. As such, we believe this project meets our stringent criteria for support. Lake One Hundred is a driving force for increasing workforce attainable housing across Lake County. We wholeheartedly support quality development for families that will help provide housing for our workforce. Lake One Hundred is currently creating a Lake County attainable housing strategic master plan on behalf of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Green Reserve meets this underrepresented housing standard. Lake One Hundred has established a go-team to examine and analyze various economic development projects around our county. We believe too often that the voices of no are represented before you. The private sector and people who work or run businesses are often not heard from. We want to offer a full support of the annexation rezoning of Greens Reserve at Lake Harris. Lake One Hundred recognizes this project, meets the city's LDRs, is compliant with the city's comprehensive plan, and will positively contribute to the local tax base. In addition, these one hundred and thirty new homes offer much-needed housing components previously mentioned. These families will also assuredly contribute to local economic development. We are aware that as Counsel members, we are likely to hear from residents who do not want this project to proceed, and can be daunting as they stand before you. Hopefully, is our sincere hope that the collective voice of the Lake One Hundred will encourage you to understand there is the widespread support of this project of positive impact. We appreciate your consideration. Sincerely, Tim Sullivan, President, Lake One Hundred. This is from Annie Agar, Chamber of Commerce member. Steem City Council members, responsible growth is necessary for a successful, thriving city, a place that people want to be a part of, spend their money in, raise their children in, work in, open their businesses in. Quality housing options bring quality residents and workers which benefit the city exponentially. Without local employees, business cannot succeed, and without businesses, the community cannot succeed. As a Chamber of Commerce with over three hundred members, we have our finger on the pulse of our community and its needs. The Tavares Chamber of Commerce knows that all too often, only the naysayers stand up and make a fuss at the city council meeting, while the silent majority are at home or running their businesses. In order for you to hear from a part of the silent majority in the Greens Reserve project, we are standing up to safely, fully support the annexation rezoning of Greens Reserve at Lake Harris. Located at two seven five two one, State Road nineteen, this annexation rezoning will give the City of Tavares more than one hundred and thirty new homes, and as a bonus, they've incorporated over sixty percent of their private property into an environmental conservation area forever. This balance is truly responsible growth. They have met all the city's land development regulations and comply with the city's current and future comprehensive plan. What more can you ask for? Over one hundred and thirty new homes mean new households contributing to Tavares tax base. It means short-term trades with building jobs and long-term prosperity. New households spending money not only in our downtown, but all around our city and county. It means full local employees, it means future local employees for our business community. We know that keeping the mileage rate low is a yearly battle. New homes contributing their fair share goes a long way towards reaching that goal you will achieve this year, the lower tax rate. Let's continue that success by approving quality projects on private property that would otherwise do nothing for the city while vacant, paying no taxes to the city yet being located in the city. With responsible growth, there are certainly increased needs in the community. The downtown needs more local patrons, particularly, particularly during the difficult off-season. Homes create those local patrons for our local downtown businesses. Without them, we struggle and some fail. In addition, Tavares Crossroads Shopping Center is ready with large plats for larger national chain restaurants. These larger chains will only come to town if there are enough rooftops to provide value. This is a quality project on all fronts. Protection for the environment, increased business support, and greater tax revenue for our city. We wanted you, you to hear from the silent majority, as I am sure you will hear from the loud minority at this meeting. Many of us will be running our businesses as we must in order to survive. We wanted you to know we support the hard decisions you have to make on the community's behalf in the face of adversity. Decisions of this nature are complex, and we hope to have shown some of the many benefits of the city in support of the annexation and rezoning of Greens Reserve at Lake Harris. Thank you for your consideration, Annie Agar, Chamber of Commerce member. Okay, this letter is from, if I get this name right, Cheryl DeCrenzo, VP, Florida Area Manager, Client Chair, Lake One Hundred Land Use Committee. Dear Counsel members from the City of Tavares, as the Chair of Lake One Hundred's Land Use Committee, we would like to respectfully offer our thoughts on the Greens Reserve project slated to appear before you this month. Lake One Hundred is a member organization committed to advancing economic development in Lake County by providing education, guidance, and leadership. Our membership represents over seventy-five of Lake County CEOs, top employers, and respected industry professionals. Based on a number of positive economic considerations, we believe this project meets our stringent criteria for support. Lake One Hundred Use Committee is home to our main go-team analysts from a land use perspective. We want to offer a full support for the annexation rezoning of Greens Reserve at Lake Harris. This project appears to meet the City of Tavares's comprehensive plan, the city's LDRs. We are thrilled that the six, that sixty percent of the property will create and foster an environmental conservation area. You are aware that as Counsel members, we are likely to hear from residents who do not want this project to proceed, and it can be daunting as they stand before you. It is our intent that the collective voice of the Lake One Hundred be heard, and illustrate the widespread support of this project of positive impact. We appreciate your consideration. Sincerely, Cheryl DeCrenzo. And last but not least, Rick Gonzalez, National Land Realty. Dear Counsel members from the City of Tavares, as a Tavares business owner and a member of Lake One Hundred, I would like to respectfully offer my thoughts on the Green Reserve project. The Lake One Hundred is a member organization committed to advancing economic development in Lake County by providing education, guidance, and leadership. Our membership represents over seventy-five of Lake County CEOs, top employers, and respected industry professionals. Our main Lake One Hundred body is also contacting you regarding the Greens Reserve project. As a means our stringent criteria for support, I also wanted to offer my perspective as a Tavares business owner. As you may be aware, Lake One Hundred is a driving force for increasing workforce attainable housing across Lake County. We wholeheartedly support quality development for families that will help provide housing for our workforce. Greens Reserve at Lake Harris meets this underrepresented housing standard. As such, I want to offer my support of the annexation rezoning of Greens Reserve at Lake Harris. I recognize this project meets the this project meets the city's LDRs, is compliant with the city's comprehensive plan, and will possibly contribute to the local tax, tax base. In addition, these one hundred and thirty new homes offer much-needed housing components previously mentioned. These families will assuredly contribute to our local development, local economic development of which our businesses will benefit from. I'm aware that as council members, you are likely to hear from residents who do not want this project to proceed, and it can be daunting as they stand before you. Too often, business owners and voices do not weigh in on projects of economic importance. It is my sincere hope that the collective voice of Lake One Hundred and my individual support will encourage you to understand there is a widespread support for this project of positive impact. I appreciate your consideration. Sincerely, Rick Gonzalez. And I also received a similar letter stating similar points from Mr. Jay Scott Berry as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Want to catch your breath. Counsel, do you have any questions? Or discussion? All right, it's my guess. And I guess the question I have, this is not going to be a fifty-five or a community, correct, Mr. Ryan?
That is correct.
Thank you. Mr. Senior, do you have any questions?
Just the, like we pointed out, the dark green, no houses can be built on that area that's going to be dedicated conservation area.
That is correct. And the cyan color up there that you see is the stormwater ponds, and the dark blue is Lake Harris.
So with this project, it's a hundred and nineteen acres, sixty-six acres will be dedicated conservation.
That is correct.
I, I agree with a lot of things that have been brought up today. I think it's a positive project for the city of Tavares. So I think it's something worthwhile that I look forward to having all residents be able to come in and enjoy, enjoy the city as much as all the other residents that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Senior. Do you have any other questions? Mr. Stevenson, do you have any questions? Ms. Sifter?
Yes. When I first met with you, was this a fifty-five or older? I don't think we talked about that.
I don't know that that was this project.
Okay, okay. Yes, maybe I confused it with another one, but I mean, I just remember us talking. Our LDR that we're working on, are we still going to have sixty-foot lots? Because I remember that was a problem that we've had all along, were sixty-foot wide lots, and through the years, we had talked about it, we're going to address that on our LDR?
I think they were fifty-five or fifty-foot lots, and I think the new comp, or you're going to be approving the comp plan, and when the comp plan is approved, you'll be developing LDRs that support it. And at that point, it sounds like the council would like wider lots. Does that make sense?
Yes.
There, there will be options for smaller lots and wider lots. My recollection is that the concern was fifty-foot wide lots. We will not have an LDR that allows fifty-foot wide lots. We do have sixty-foot wide lots as a number.
Okay, and then my next thing is, nothing's really changed from the day I met y'all about the traffic, and we had someone nodding and speak about that as if we don't care, but you know, I'm always on this traffic out there. So, you know, the same thing when we were approving other things out there, y'all were approving because I voted against, but I'm just real concerned about the traffic on Dead River Road, because even when they do what's proposed to fix it, it will maybe accommodate what's already there, because we've already got an issue. And I know of two other developments that are going in that have already been approved on Dead River Road. So I'm just trying to understand how this traffic, how are we going to accommodate the traffic? And, and I know people have these traffic studies, and we've had them come in and tell us, but they've never sat there and sat through three lights and all the accidents. So I'm just wondering, has any more talk been on that? Have you heard anything else? I know that the county has said that they have budgeted, they have budgeted for these turn lanes, but just because they budgeted for it doesn't mean it's going to happen. We take things out of the budget all the time. But even if they do it, they start on it tomorrow, I don't believe it's going to accommodate, it'll just accommodate what's there right now. We've already got two, how many homes are going in out there on those two subdivisions? A bunch, yeah. I'm just concerned about the traffic. And I love the idea, I told you that day, I love the idea of this. We desperately need it. I mean, we desperately need this type of housing because we, we just don't have enough of it. I'm just really, really concerned about the traffic.
Yeah, well, obviously DOT is, is reviewing traffic studies as well, you know, from the traffic engineer. So that's all I can, I'm not the professional in traffic, so I can just tell you what the traffic report says from the traffic engineer, and that DOT is, is reviewed and approved, so to speak.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing I'll add is, and I heard an anecdotal comment that the traffic isn't being looked at by the city, and that's just so far from the truth, because a comprehensive traffic analysis is done by a professional Florida traffic engineer. That is reviewed by staff in thoroughness, and there's a lot of information, a lot of data on that area in that traffic report. It is then presented to the Planning and Zoning Board, and they go through it, and then it is presented to you. So traffic is looked at very, very closely. We do know that State Road nineteen, which is four-laned in some sections and two-laned in others, has a, is programmed in the future to be four-laned the entire route. We've had a lot of meetings on that, and they have it programmed a couple of years out. This particular property, of course, is, is south of Dead River Road, which is the problem intersection. This one is close to the bridge going to Howie. But if you go north, the bridge you're, the one you're talking about, on Dead River Road, is, there is a problem with that particular intersection, and the county has, is designing it, engineering it, spending a lot of money on that, and I don't see them usually shelving a project when they've spent that much money on the design and engineering. I suspect that intersection will be done within, is James here?
A year?
Correct, and by twenty twenty-one.
All right, so by twenty twenty-one, that whole intersection north of this project will be completely redone. That'll, that'll help a lot. When the state four-lanes the rest of the road that isn't four-laned, that will help a lot. And then they just built a brand-new bridge across, and they have plans for another bridge when they four-length. So traffic studies are being done. We're looking at it very closely. A lot of people are looking at it. Staff is looking at it, P and Z is looking at it, you're looking at it. There's a lot of plans to improve the traffic there over the next ten years. I think things are going to get better. They're not perfect now, but they are going to get better.
Can I just say one quick thing about what James had just said, twenty twenty-one? It is slated by the NIP for twenty twenty-one, so they're planning on, the plans are under design now. They will be submitted to the county probably the middle of September, and then hopefully January or February, they'll have a contractor selected, which then the work will be done probably by the end of twenty twenty-one. Just wanted you to, wanted to clarify that it's not going to be January twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, and I'm concerned too about when you build the homes, or can we help sell them if the people were coming in and there's just such these traffic issues, you know?
Right.
Coming into Tavares because it's bad, it's just really bad, and, and it's just hard doing anything out, you know, from Main Street on down, because all the way to the bridge, it's just, it's not working so well. All right, thank you, that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Stevenson, any comments, any questions?
No, I feel comfortable listening to everyone.
And just to be clear, this development will be right next to your, to the soccer complex in the by Three Point?
That's correct.
Okay, across the street from our apartment.
That's correct.
Okay. And we still haven't, so we're going to have that property in between that's not annexed, right? So, because we're, we're city of Tavares, and then you've got the Three Point that's not city of Tavares, and then we're going to have city of Tavares.
I believe it goes, you're going off the lake into the soccer complex, and then it begins the city of Tavares from that point forward, because that's all towards Lake Water, according to.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mr. Stevenson?
Yeah, I have another question, and out of my quid pro quo to address this. Would this development be the largest development that had the largest percentage of wetland area in it, up to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, yes, this has a, 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 It's a residential center family, RFS2, West End Preservation Area, 119.57 acres, a property located at 27521 State Road 19.
Motion to resign, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any of those? Motion carries five to zero. Which brings us to tab five, ordinance 2020-08. The Palmer Property Annexation and Res zoning of 1.72 acres located in the northwest corner of Slim Haywood Avenue in State Road 19. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mayor. As stated, the subject property is 1.72 acres located at Slim Haywood Avenue in State Road 19. The land is vacant and presently zoned as county agricultural district. The applicant is proposing that the property be annexed and rezoned to City Highway Commercial C2. The proposed zoning of Highway Commercial is appropriate for property that abuts a state highway, and it is compatible with surrounding property zone. The property is adjacent to parcels already annexed into the city and designated as Highway Commercial. The new public shopping center is directly adjacent west of this property. The applicant at this time envisions commercial uses that would be compatible with the commercial development taking place on State Road 19. The annexation of this property has been reviewed per the city's annexation policy, and no negative fiscal impact is implicated. The environmental assessment submitted by the applicant indicates no adverse conditions on the property. The preliminary traffic analysis submitted does not indicate an adverse impact to level of service. When this project, if this project moves forward, staff will be asking for a more detailed traffic analysis to obtain some plan approval. The city is concurrently processing future land use amendments for the property to change from Lake County urban median to Taverius commercial. At their July 16 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Board voted unanimously recommend approval of ordinance 2020-08, and staff is recommending that the city council moves to approve ordinance 2020-08.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. I have not received any requests from the public. Would anyone like to address this topic before we close public input? Please, please, see your name and address in three minutes.
Hello again. My name is Pete Pence. I'm a certified planner with the Hattie Group. Also with me is David Asadi, who is the professional engineer, working for Traffic Mobility Consultants, who's a traffic engineer that we're working on the project. If you have any questions for him. Like, this is the annexation of the final corridor, this intersection. We have CQ zoning, the body goes to the last, to the north, as you know, it is a public shopping center, doing sound parcels, it's also making commercial parcels to the west of this, and it's not that long ago. And to the east, you have several left in under construction, Circle K, and on the east side, we are compatible. The remaining order, the southwest corner intersection is a potential bond for residential subdivision. So we'll have no negative impact on any of our neighbors, we are compatible with those other businesses.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak? Don't be very slow with public input, cancel. Do you have any questions or comments?
I have a comment. I know that there was mention there Taco Bell and Popeyes, but I'd like to curse my parents for Taco John's, but I'd like to write them out, it's very, not going anywhere.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or discussion? Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve ordinance 2020-08.
I have a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Which brings us to tab six, ordinance 2020-09, Palmer Property. We've future land use of the 1.72 acres in the northwest corner of Slim Haywood Avenue in State Road 19, Mr. Fitzgerald did not submit it.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2020-09 is a companion ordinance to what we just reviewed. Proposes a small-scale future land use amendment, changing the property from Lake County urban median density to city commercial. A city commercial designation is compatible with surrounding property. The city has municipal water and sewer services available, no adverse impacts for level of service are implicated. The amendment request, change of the future land use designation would serve as the most appropriate land use for the property. At the July 16 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Board voted unanimously recommend approval of ordinance 2020-09, and staff recommends that the city council moves to approve ordinance 2020-09.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. I have not received any requests from the public. Would anyone like to address this topic? Close public input, cancel. Do you have any questions or discussions? Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve ordinance 2020-09.
Do I have a second? A second. Do you have a motion, a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Which brings us to tab seven, ordinance 2020-07, Green Property. Future land use of 119.57 acres located in 27521 State Road 19. Mr. Fitzgerald, again.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2020-07 is a companion ordinance to what was reviewed for the Great Property Annexation. It proposes a large-scale amendment to the future land use map, changing the property from county rural transition to city low-density and wetland conservation. City low-density residential designation of 5.6 units per acre is compatible with surrounding property, and all wetlands determined to be greater than one acre in size shall be designated as wetland and conservation. And surrounding the property are residential in nature. City of Taverius has municipal water and sewer service available to the property, no adverse impact to level of service. The amendment request is consistent with our comprehensive plan, and a low-density residential and wetland conservation future land use would be the most appropriate land use for the property. This proposal was presented to the Plannings Onboard at their July 16 meeting. They voted unanimously recommend approval, and staff recommends that the city council moves to approve what we are approving as the transmittal of ordinance 2020-07 to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity and other state agencies for review. Ordinance 2020-07 will come back to city council for adoption here. So this is to approve the transmittal of the ordinance to the state for review. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. I have not received any requests from the audience. If anyone would like to address this topic. Don't be close to public input, cancel. Do you have any questions or discussion? Do I have a motion?
I have a motion that we approve, transmittal of ordinance 2020-08.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Which brings us to tab eight, consideration of collective bargaining agreement between the city and various professional firefighters, union, and the city of Taverius. Chief Keefe.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. For the audio record, this is Richard Keefe, your fire chief, and this is a change of gears, we're not talking about land now, so we're talking about firefighters. This is a presentation of our collective bargaining agreement between the various firefighters' union and the city of Taverius. So to start this, we really need to start back a year ago, back in our collective bargaining agreement we had last year. For a number of reasons, we were kind of late in the process of getting started. We identified, once we did start, we had some compression issues in our salary ranges, and we wanted to get those fixed, both sides wanted to fix those, but it was late in the fiscal year preparation for that budget, for the budget window now. And of course, Finance Director Houghton and Mr. Dury, they need some lead time to work those things in. So what we did is we just put a placeholder in last year's collective bargaining agreement saying that we would address it this year, with this year's collective bargaining process. Sounds willing to go. We persuaded to start in February, we knew we were going to start real early, give ourselves plenty of time to do that, and along comes the COVID pandemic. So that just throws the monkey wrench at everything, including collective bargaining agreements. So we did get started, we went ahead and started early, we've been meeting by Zoom meetings, we've been meeting social distancing. Councilmember Stevenson got to be part of the management team this year, so thank you, Mr. Stevenson, it was a pleasure having you as part of that process. And I think maybe you learned something about firefighters, that they're not as bad as, they're okay. So thank you for being there and part of that. So we have a final agreement that we're presenting to you tonight for your consideration. You've had copies, you should have two copies in your agenda packet. One has all the strike throughs and underlies, changes, deletions of old language, additions of new language, and then there's another copy, a second copy that's marked craft, but that is a signature-ready copy of the collective bargaining agreement. Some of the salient points that come forward in this year's collective bargaining process are that the members of the firefighters' union have agreed to receive the same 2% COLA that has been proposed for all city employees. The members of the firefighter union agree to the same changes for health benefits proposed for all city employees. And then we were able to address those compression issues to the satisfaction of both parties, and we made notation of that in this year's collective bargaining agreement. So we can say safely that it's done. We have taken care of those compression issues to everyone's satisfaction. So we have a couple of options for you. Option number one is for the Taverius City Council to move to accept the changes to the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Taverius Professional Firefighters, looking for it to 245 as presented in your agenda packet, authorizing the city administrators sign the agreement on behalf of the city. And the second option is for you to take no action and just give staff an alternative direction. And of course, our recommendation from staff is optional one. And this has been reviewed by Mr. Williamson. So, Mayor, back to you. Council, thank you very much for your consideration. Mr. Houghton, Mr. Dury, and I are here for any questions.
I just want to add one thing, I want to thank Councilmember Roy Stevenson for attending every meeting and assisting us with the whole process. It was great to have you be part of the management team. Lori Houghton for being there and assisting in the process. Chrissy Puglitz over here for being at all the meetings and assisting with the process, and of course, our fire chief for being at those meetings as well. Just thank you all for being part of the management team to work through these issues. All right, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dury. I have not received any requests from the audience to speak, but does anyone would like to speak on this topic before we close public input? Seeing no close public input, cancel. Do you have any questions?
Yes, I miss this. Don't shoot me, but I just want to ask this. So this is part of, so if we agree to this and the city administrator signs, because of the 2%, that is, we've got the COLA increase that we have in the budget as of right now, the budget hasn't been approved, so what happened if somehow it came out of the budget? Say, say we decide we can't afford to give our employees a 2% cost of living raise because of the bad things that have happened? What happens with this if we've approved it tonight?
I think the answer to that question is the intent of the two parties was that they will receive the same increase as the other employees. And I will not be signing this on behalf of this council until the budget is done. Once the budget is done, if the budget does not get completed, or it's a different number, then we'll be going back to the bargaining and telling them that it's a new number, but they've already agreed to go with the same as all the other employees.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Any other questions from council? Do I have a motion? I have a motion that we go with the staff's recommendation of option one, please. Have a motion, a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, council, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, chief. Which brings us to tab nine, park location and proposed pickleball court, community services.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Council previously authorized the staff to build a pickleball court out at Ridge Park alongside the future site of the senior center, and earlier this year, the DLR group presented a master plan to everyone that showed that pickleball court right alongside Alfred Street, right next to where the senior center was going to go and the shuffleboard courts. Looking further into that, we're finding that the pickleball really won't fit right there. The court is just not conducive to that area. It would take up the space right next to Alfred Street. So we're looking at, either we could look at the master site plan again, revisit that, look at the layout, make the adjustments, or our recommendation is to actually move the pickleball over to where the tennis ball, the tennis court area is at Asop's Park. It would open up Ridge Park, that green space, it would be more conducive to the senior center with that extra land, and the sports of tennis and pickleball are very cohesive, so you can actually convert temporarily your tennis courts into pickleball courts with portable nets and lined chalk or lined tape, and use those as both pickleball and tennis courts. Before you tonight, we're asking you to consider that recommendation of just moving that pickleball over to Asop's. Are you ready to answer any questions?
Thank you very much. I have not received any requests from the audience, but anyone would like to speak on this topic?
I think the only thing I'll add is you all have already approved the pickleball court, you've approved the budget, you've approved the funding for it, you've approved the loan for it. This is really just making sure you're okay if it's moved to a different location.
Okay. Seeing no indication from the audience that anyone would like to speak on close public input, cancel, do you have any questions? Do you have comments?
Yeah, I have a couple. I know when we first looked at this, and it was going to come back for council prior to the whole, you know, building, the whole facility, you know, I always had a little bit of a problem with the single pickleball court. I know, you know, it's a very popular sport. My son currently plays tennis, he's a tennis player, so very familiar with, you know, the combination of pickleball and tennis. But it seems to me like a majority of pickleball courts, they always consist of either three or four courts. I don't know if having one pickleball court is really worth going after. I would rather see us, I do like the idea of, you know, possibly moving it over to Asop, but I would rather see us, you know, use that money than else, rather than, I think, do we know how much is the budget for the pickleball court?
It's $30,000.
$30,000. I mean, I would much rather see us kind of put this on hold, pickleball court at least, do a little bit more research and see if, you know, at a later time, we can maybe put in three courts or four courts. I just, I just think if we're going to do it, I think we need to do it right, and I just think putting one pickleball court in could just not be the right way to go.
Any other comments or questions from council?
The tennis courts that are there, we could actually make those part of the pickleball court, correct? I see Vice Mayor staring at me, she doesn't own her tennis courts.
No, I was just, I'm going to be honest, I'm the liaison to this project, and I've never heard, you know, when I saw this agenda, it's the first I've heard about pickleball courts not being in there, so not sure what happened there, but I know nothing about this, so other than, you know, I'll be, so I'm not really sure what's going on here. I'm looking at you, because the tennis courts, I'm just thinking the money would bar, you know, on the loan, so what does that mean? That if, you know, we're not, I mean, we're not restricted as to what we could do, correct?
You'd be restricted to what the loan was for, you know, which is the five, six projects you approved.
Yeah.
And you could, I think we could ask the loan issuer if you wanted to do some other type of project with the $30,000. It would be easy to do the, you know, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight projects, six projects you approved as part of it. Yeah, and, you know, the only, I think I agree with Councilmember Singer that having more than one pickleball court is important. I do know that, as he said, tennis courts could be converted temporarily for pickleball courts, and I don't know how you all feel about that, whether you'd rather keep it as tennis courts or, you know. I mean, what we can do, I was not aware, Councilmember, or Board of Mr. that Tamara had not coordinated this with you, so what we could do is maybe table this item, look at it a little more closely, work with the leadees on of this particular project, and come back with some options for you, because I was not aware that you weren't part of that.
Any other discussion from council, or anyone would like to make a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
I'll make a motion to table this topic until there's more information. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Which brings us to the budget workshop, Ms. Houghton.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. Can you hear me on this?
I can, can anyone?
It's a little low, if you could just get close to it.
Okay. It didn't sound at first like it was working that well.
That's much better, just stay close to it.
Okay. All right. This is one of the final workshops to finalize your proposed budget for the general fund, utilities fund, special funds, and capital improvement funds for the upcoming fiscal year 2021, which of course runs through October through September of next year. Previously, July 1st, we presented, staff presented the general fund budget. On July 15th, staff presented the utility and special revenue funds to the council, and also there was some discussion on the general fund budget. On July 29th, this council established a lower millage rate for the upcoming FY21 fiscal year of 6.90, and also loaded the voted debt service millage rate to .22623. And then on August 5th, staff presented the capital improvement program to council. The final, as it stands today, the final state share of revenues have been received, estimates have been received from the state and incorporated into the proposed budget, which resulted in the general fund budget being adjusted, as indicated on your agenda's summary sheet. The stormwater budget was also adjusted to reflect a change of overseeing of the right of way department. It was moved from the general fund over to stormwater fund, where there's more synergy. And in doing so, there had to be some adjustments in the budget through the transfers to accomplish that move. It is recommended that council have discussions tonight on those items that they would like, that they asked us to bring back for more discussion, as well as any other items in the budgets, and then finalize the budgets for the public hearings. I think the term notice most people should receive this week, I know I received mine from the Lake County Property Praiser, which stated the 6.90 millage rate and the .2623 voted debt service millage rate. After you finalize the budget, then this will come back to you for the public hearing, and we will advertise in the second meeting of September. The general fund budget is changed from a total budget of $18,944,810 to $18,799,263. That's a reduction of $145,547, equal changes in revenue and expenditure. And I think we gave you a couple exhibits tonight that we laid, that could put at the dais for you. There is Exhibit A that reconciles the budget, that shows the changes that have been made to the budget due to the decrease in revenues and the change from the right-of-way department from the general fund over to the stormwater fund. And then we also, Exhibit B provides a list of some of the items that council requested us to bring back. One is, number one on the list is designating the current year canceled 4th of July fireworks budget of $49,700 for either roads, COVID release celebration in the entertainment district, or put it in reserves to carry forward. Number two, discuss increasing the budget for roads. The city budgeted $225,000 in road paving in the prior fiscal year, FY2020. The proposed budget for roads FY2021 is $130,000, and the FY2021 budget reflects a decrease of $95,000. Number three on council's list was to discuss the Florida retirement system benefits budgeted in the city, for the city council in the FY2021 budget. FRS is budgeted for city council members at a total cost of $4,413, and that is scheduled for implementation if council was forward for July 2021. And then number four on the list was council asked for discussions on passing credit card fees to customers. And this, we did some research, I went through, looked at the most recent completed fiscal year FY19, and looked at what we've spent to the credit card processors for all of the different merchant accounts that we have, but the two that council was interested in was the general fund and the pavilion, and those together totaled about $10,000 in fees. And those are the items and backup that I've given you tonight. And I'm available for any questions, but Brett in the audience as well, so we're here to help you make your decisions, or assist you.
Thank you, Ms. Houghton. I have not received any requests to speak to the audience, would anyone like to speak on the topic before we move forward to close on public input? Seeing no input from the audience, we close public input, cancel. Do you have any questions or discussion? Or we could just go behind this quote list, and we can go right back to this, but then there's going to be some trouble. I have one, designating the current council's 4th of July budget, $49,700, discussion of whether we should use it for roads, reopening in Taverius Entertainment District or reserves. Ms. Puglitz, what was your opinion?
Well, I'm going to have to go with reserves. We're in tough times right now, we don't know when this situation with COVID is going to be put to bed, and what that's going to affect, so my gut feeling is we go to reserves, it's there. You know, if the money comes in, there's money available, then we can play with that, but I vote with the reserves.
Mr. Singer?
Yeah, I know we, unfortunately, had to cancel our fireworks celebration, there was a number of other events that we had to cancel as well, the fire October fest, the Boo Fest. I know some of those funds were relative, so the general fund, and I know that we had also discussed, you know, once this whole COVID is behind us, we're going to have a large celebration. So I mean, I think it'd be nice to be able to have that, but it seems to me like we don't need all that $49,000 from the 4th of July celebration. It seems like we can, all the money, all the events that we've canceled, we've saved a lot of money from those, I think we can, you know, do something as far as some type of celebration, but, you know, with those other funds that we've had to, or the other events, I think we could use those funds. I would still like to see us try to get our road repainting up this year, however, we can do that. I'm a little disappointed that that had to be reduced this year, that's something that I think is very important, I think all of us really appreciate, when our roads are able to get resurfaced. And I also agree with, we've been said, we're in some tough times, we definitely need to add to our reserves, but I'd like for us to look at the other events that were canceled, be able to use those funds for something as well, and also try to add to our road resurfacing.
Thank you, Mr. Singer, Mr. Stevenson?
Mr. Dury, please. If we put a sense of reserves, can we pull some back out there on, let's say, God willing, COVID, and it's on?
Yes.
I'm all about.
Ms. Fitzgerald?
Okay, well, I've been doing my homework, so I'm going to have to ask hard questions here. I've been out, you know, talking with the public, and you hear me talk about that $400,000 to get to the rollback rate. Did our employees lose any funds during COVID?
You mean pay?
Yes.
No.
Is it fair, so with our tax rate, when it's not going to the rollback rate, people are going to be paying more taxes, I mean, it's correct? Even though we're going back to 6.90 or whatever?
It depends on what your value of your property is. If the value of your property went down, or paid less, if it stayed the same?
Yeah, the value's go up.
It depends on your property, your specific property. So if your property remained the same, your tax rate goes down. If your property value went up, your property value goes up.
According to the tax, according to our tax assessor? According to the tax, according to our tax assessor of our property, is, did the values go up from the city to areas?
Well, the, some properties did, yes. The total is new construction. When we get our revenues, it's expansion of individual properties, it's new houses that came online, and it's property values that went up. And I think it's fair to say that the property values went up in the community, as a, as a, like a majority of them. But I'd have to go through 6,000 parcels to figure out who's went down and who's went up.
And the employees, y'all know, I support y'all, I respect y'all. I vote every single year for raises, except during 2011, when we were going through those tough times, when we just couldn't. I'm wondering, is this one of those times? You know, I've just had people in the public ask me this, and I, I'm wondering if this is one of these times, because the people, even with us going back a little bit, that we've gone back, the people who this hurts the most are going to be the taxpayers. And most of these taxpayers have lost money. Most of these taxpayers, because of COVID, have lost a lot of money, and they're all struggling. So now they're going to, not only do they have less money, and their property values have gone up, most of them, but now they're also paying for raises, when our employees, y'all don't look at me like this, our employees didn't lose anything through COVID. They didn't, but yet the majority of the people in our city did. The majority of the businesses, the majority of the working people did lose.
The only thing I would.
So I'm just, I'm trying to find that $400,000, because I don't want to go to the rollback rate for the first time since I've been on the council. That's what I'd like to see.
I will say this, while most people were social distancing, isolating in their homes and doing all of that, our first responders were out on the front line, protecting our residents. You know, they were out there doing what they needed to do, putting themselves at risk. All of your employees were out there taking care of our people in this city. And I think the 2% is very de minimis. When I look at the raises that all the other cities are proposing this year, and county and all that, we're lower than that. And so if you were having a lower raise than a lot of your other cities and county, these folks worked really, really hard for five months while we went through COVID, protecting our public and doing everything. And I'm, this board said collectively that they wanted to take care of their employees. Y'all voted on that, and yet that was the instruction. And so we put in there a small thank you to all these hardworking employees. The other thing I will say is we have less employees per capita than any other city around here. We have a lean, mean, bite machine. That means it's all hands on deck. Everybody was out there helping each other get the job done, because we don't have a large government here. If you look at all the data, when you compare our cities to other cities in Florida, we have a small number of employees per capita with other cities the same size. So I think the 2% is justified when you compare with what's going on around here.
Okay, these are just all questions. There's questions I've been asked. And what is that 2% raise across the board as far as the total of what it's increased our budget?
For the general fund, it's approximately, and I don't have the exact number here, but it's approximately $80,000.
$80,000, and then on the other side is?
Probably about $30,000.
Okay. And these events that we've had, can the money, can that decrease? Can we, can we, can we go back further on this rate? I mean, it doesn't sound like, is there anything that we could do, that you know off the top of your head, that we could get to this $400,000 without allowing the employees to have their 2%? What in the world can we do to get to this $400,000? That's what I'm asking. I mean, I've been sitting.
I think you have to start closing libraries down and closing, you know, lower the service level. One of the things this board said was a similar level of service for our community and lower the milage rate. So think about this. In order to provide a similar level of service, the cost goes up. Cost goes up because electric goes up, fuel goes up, healthcare goes up. All the costs associated with contracting out all of our services that we have goes up. So the cost is going up, but we're going to lower the revenues. It's a challenge to create that balance. So this particular year, there aren't a lot of projects. We lowered the roads. There are no real significant, you know, projects that are being funded out of the general fund. It's a tight year. I mean, it's a lean year. But the direction of this board was lower the milage rate. We did that. The direction of this board was a similar level of service. We did that. I think we would have to go in and lower a level of service somewhere.
Well, these are just hard questions, but they need to be asked, because the public really don't understand this. They think.
Well, I think this is a budget workshop, and these questions are appropriate. I mean, that's what budget workshops are about. Talk about all the options. It's a tough budget year for everybody across America, including governments, and this is what the budget workshop should be for, is to dive into it deeper and deeper and deeper.
So departments, you don't think a department, all the departments couldn't find 2% or 5%, they couldn't find anything, you think, in their budgets?
Well, they did. I mean, in order to do what needed to be done, they all had to cut, cut, cut. I have provided, what, how many millions of dollars worth of cuts this year? Quite a few. And I gave it to you in two forms, existing things that we already have, that I'm cutting, and things that we need in the future, that we needed for next year that I've cut. So there are millions of dollars of cuts, or things that were needed to keep this city on a forward path, and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of cuts for things we currently have. So the department heads and the management team, cut, 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 to meet the board's collective priorities, which were similar level of service, lower the milage rate.
And these events, what would that add up to? Could we go back any if we're not doing these events? And we just say, we're going event-free this year, just?
No Christmas. I mean, I think that's, Christmas is in the $75,000 range.
About 50 from the other.
Yeah.
And then what other little events that we're not able to do? I mean, does that, that could maybe be 25% of the $400,000 that we're trying to find out?
I mean, one of the things you have to be considering, I know the chamber is not fully here now, but they are dependent upon these events. I mean, the downtown business community needs those events in order to stay in business. I mean, they've got waiters and waitresses, and cooks, and dishwashers, and people that need, if you just, you know, you've got an entertainment district, and then you're going to have no events, and, you know, to get another point, something out of the mill, which is going to do, you know, $5 for the average resident. I understand every $5 is important, but you're not going to get enough money. You're going to, you're going to close down the events in the downtown. It's going to affect all the business community down there, and then the home, the business community and the homeowners are going to see a few dollars. I just think the unintended consequences are going to be larger than we're at. We looked at this budget, you looked at this budget, all of you, you've, we've been, and it is down to, you know, this year's a very bare, basic budget, in order to meet the goals of this board, which is to lower the milage rate and maintain our library and our, you know, our level of services.
And you feel confident that we'll be able to be full swing ahead come Christmas?
My personal opinion is this COVID thing is going away. And.
November.
Looks like it's, it's going away. Yeah. And I think in January, we'll be back. And I've cut many things. I've put in, to be looked, you guys can look at them again in April. There are projects that are needed, including road paving and those things. So those projects are all on hold. We'll be, you know, back in April to see if there's anything else we can do. Yeah, I mean, I think we have a very lean budget for our city, and we have a very lean budget when you compare us to anybody else.
And thank you. Like I said, when you're out there and you're talking to people, I can't answer a lot of these questions, so I felt like this was the best place to, to present all the questions I've been asked, and thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Houghton, I know that you had picked up a, a paper, because I know that you wanted to say how many millions of dollars were cut, or how much money has gotten from the budget already?
From the general fund budget alone, we cut $939,170 from personal service costs. A lot of additions that we had in last year's budget that we didn't fill, that were already budgeted that we have on hold, that we cut. And we'll look at, we'll add, bring some of those back and ask in April if revenues come back. We cut $1,240,944 from operating expenditures, such as contracts, your supplies, the things that are needed to get the service level, the service delivery implemented. Capital equipment, $2,826,818. We had capital projects that were on our CIP plan that we had switched out in out years, A total of $11,928,798 that were cut, just from the general fund budget.
Thank you, Ms. Houghton. And just to clarify my question, number one, put it in reserves, so that as things arise, we can pass money in there to address them. As far as, number two, discussing the budget for roads, I know it's been decreasing. I know that we just got a savings from our initial budget of $125,000. Is that calculated in the milage? Would that reduce our milage by savings from the proposed budget to the actual budget? Or?
Well, revenues went down 145. So there's, it was an equalization. Spenses went down, revenues went down, yes.
So there's no money to be gained in the initial roads?
No.
So, does anyone have any further discussion on the road paving projects for this year? Or do I want to say what they need to say?
I think I've already said, I mean, just anything that we can find, I would like to try to increase our road resurfacing, but, you know, but again, I'm also in favor of adding to our reserves as well. Like I said, I just, you know, there's a hard hit going from the 225 down to the 130, so anything that we can find for that, I prefer to see it go in there first.
And then we will be back to you in April, when the economy turns around, and one of the first things on your list is roads.
And what is our, what is in our reserves right now? I mean, where are we at as far as our numbers?
About a billion, or?
And I know this was what we were trying to reach, a certain part of our, this is suggested amount, whatever our suggested amount is, but I'd like to know too, is where we are actually?
We can get, I like to deal with real accurate numbers, so we will bring that back to you. Just to make sure we have the exact numbers that are there.
Do you have it?
We estimate to end the fiscal year, based on the budget we have and what we ended up with last year, $1.252,745. And that gives us 6.6%.
And what percentage are we aiming for?
Well, the goal is between 5 and 20% is GFOA, so we're on the low end of it. If you don't want to go below 5, you want to be above 5, and we're at, would you say 6?
6.6. We'd, we'd like to get to a point where we have three months of operating expenditures. So when we get to that point, and to do it all at once would be costly to the taxpayers. So doing it gradually over time is a powerful solution.
Thank you, Ms. Houghton.
Do we have any other event money that we didn't use that could also go into reserves to build that up? Do we have any that we, because we've had other events canceled?
Yeah, a lot of the private events don't really, we do in-kind services, you know, we'll do Fortelets, we'll do overtime with the police department and others, you know, to handle. There's not a lot of cash that goes into those private events. Our events are, as you know, the Christmas event, the 4th of July, Boo Fest, there's a fourth, what am I missing? Rocktoberfest. So those are the four we do. And.
All right, which brings us to item number three, discussing the Florida retirement system benefits budgeted for city council. Anybody have any questions or discussion on that topic?
I just feel that as city council, this is not a career up here. This is a circus to our residents. And I know it's only $4,000 and change, but I don't think we should be taking in that. That's just my thought.
So can that be optional if council wishes to take that, a candidate, if they don't, they can?
Yes. When that is implemented, there will be a process, and each council member will vote, and it will be an irreversible, irrevocable vote for yourself, by any, should you leave office, if a new council member comes in, they will automatically be required to be part of the FRS.
They'll be required to do that?
Yes.
Yes, that's.
Yeah, it's, it's a vote per person, once you implement it, and that one person cannot come back and join later. But when they vacate the position, then the next person is an automatic. It's just like for city employees, when we implemented it at FRS, each employee had the option, do I want to go into FRS or do I not? And it's a revocable decision.
I'm having trouble with that word tonight.
So, I mean, if we don't do that, that's $20,000 per year that we spend. Yeah, so I mean, I'm not in favor of, you know, council members, you know, just breaking the FRS. I think we need to, you know, have this as a career, so I would be in favor of that.
Ms. Houghton, just to clarify, I know that you just mentioned $20,000, but your cheat sheet says $4,000 for all council members? So is it $4,000 for everybody, or $4,000 per person?
He asked the possibility, what it would be for the whole year. That's $4,413 for starting in July through the end of September next year. So it would be just for quarter, for all four quarters, for a full year, it would be $4,444.
And I think this was only brought up, wasn't there something that you were, what was that, same thing with the insurance, remember? I think that we were just, I thought of.
And you're considered employee, employees, and it was same benefits, just like the county does. They're all elected constitutionals in Lake County, your property appraiser, a lot of cities, you know, that are in the FRS. When you're up here, you're an employee, so you get healthcare, you get some pay, you get some little retirement. I mean, it's a stipend on the pay, and it's a stipend on the retirement. It's probably $50 maybe when you're after 30 years. I mean, I haven't done the calculation, but yeah, all your elected officials are treated like employees, so you'll see the benefits that other employees get are usually given to the city. The city doesn't have the FRS. You have the pay, you have the healthcare, you have the other things. This was the only one you didn't have in, in your package. So to treat you like the rest of the employees and like the county does, this was the last piece.
But again, wasn't that something, we started talking about this years ago, wasn't that something that came down, ruling that about employees? That's why we ended up with the insurance? There was something that came down?
Yeah, I think there was more, but on the FRS, it's elective. On the FRS, you couldn't either choose, huh?
Well, insurance was elective, but it had to be offered, right?
Yes, that's what it was. Had to be offered.
Well, I already have an FRS account, and I know that this is not going to make much of a difference by the addition, so hopefully they'll be trying to retire on, or simply cancel FRS for you. So I don't think it's really necessary for simply cancel. And then, you know, my personal opinion, if you don't stay on city council to monitor that after the fact, for the $150 you may have in your account, and then have to follow the fees, you'll have spending what you're earning, so.
I would say that council, the city council would be required to contribute 3% of their pay on the employee side as well.
It still would not make that much of a difference for anybody. So anybody else have any comments they'd like to make?
I don't want you up 2% on all that pay. The FRS, what, I'm sorry, I see.
Uh, the FRS wouldn't mean, I'm sorry, I see, the FRS wouldn't mean that much to me. That's twenty thousand right there, if we all agreed that we didn't want to do that, that's going to be something near twenty grand. Maybe we could put that towards roads, Mr. Singer, you know?
It'll actually be four thousand.
For this quarter, and going forward, that's twenty thousand right there.
In the future, yeah.
So what if we all just decided to agree, like, we'll all give up our FRS here on city council? And just if we mean that we want to fix roads, let's move in.
Do we have that four thousand dollars already budgeted?
Yeah, it's in your budget.
Oh, so now we only need three hundred and ninety-six thousand?
All right, so it sounds like we're equally grateful for that. So which brings us to item four, discussing passing away further pieces of customers. I know that we just brought that up. Do you have any additional comments or discussion?
No, thank you for researching that, Lori. I think we should pass it on, and every other municipality, when you charge, pass on the percentage. You go to the county and they pass it on, so I will see why not. It's ten thousand dollars.
Well, we gotta keep you short on roads. So, Mr.?
What's that percentage?
The percentage average, because every, every credit card, some credit cards get a different rate based on their credit worthiness. And the average for general fund for FY nineteen was two point six-three-seven percent, and approximately two dollars and ninety-six cents per transaction. And the cost for the general fund was two thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-three cents. The cost for the pavilion was seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. And the percentage is lower, one point nine-nine-five percent. But the cost per transaction is approximately, it is thirty-five ninety-seven, that's the average, thirty-five dollars, ninety-seven cents. But the average sale of the pavilion for rental of the whole facility is five thousand dollars.
Do they answer your question?
Yes, you know, I know of a company that, I think it was three point nine-nine, and that you use, and it, it didn't matter if you, you could swipe your credit card one hundred times, you could, if they owed you ten dollars, you could just swipe it, you know, a penny at a time for the same amount. So, I mean, you might want to shop that as far as passing it around when it comes out to be the, which I know y'all, well, you're much better at this than I am. But, yeah, there's some out there though that we could really save that money.
Mr. Stevenson?
You know, I'm thinking, the pavilion, we're trying to get the pavilion to break even if they're spending seven thousand. We could bring in ten thousand, that would help the pavilion break even, just the way I'm looking at this right now. I just kind of always liked the idea of doing things that are in various, being unique. I mean, each person's not paying that much, we would have ten thousand to help the pavilion break even. I think I would be okay with passing the credit card fee along to the consumer who's probably using that type of pressure.
And that would be across the board, that would be if they're signing up for law, or if they're paying their.
Building permits.
Or building permits, everything spread out.
I'm not sure we can pass on on the higher cost transactions a hundred percent. I've been in conversations with our provider, there is some state law on what we can pass, provide, implement. So I'll be working on that and get that back to you. But I just wanted to throw that out.
Mr. Singer?
I think towards roads, only like eighty thousand dollars more to bump up to last year's budget.
All right, does, Mr. Drury, does this require a motion on any of these items?
I think I've got the consensus of the board, so we will adjust the budget based on the consensus that I heard today. That will create resolutions and budgets for the public hearings. And there'll be two public hearings in September, one is on Wednesday, and one is on Thursday for the general public. We'll advertise it as we always do, and you'll have one final, two final shots on making any more adjustments to the budget after you get the public comment during the public hearing process. So I think we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. And do we have any additional questions on the budget before we let this move off of them?
I'm just hoping if you can find anything that we can roll back a little bit more, I'd certainly be happy. Anything comes up in the next two weeks, an endowment or something, I don't know.
If I receive a candid answer, I would be screaming from the audience. I guess I will, anything I have.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Which brings me to new business, is there any new business? Seeing there's new business, is there any old business? Seeing there's old business, I worry the audience to be heard, I haven't received any requests from the public, but I see Mr. Drury standing up, so we'll let him get him here. Please remember to say your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Ben Chioco, one two six one nine Milwaukee Avenue. Interesting discussion about the rollback rate. I just wanted to agree with Lori that I think you should be moving to the rollback rate. I think every city in this county should, and the county should also. I do know that you have sales tax reductions, I know that there are capital projects can be pushed back. And the discussion about cuts, you gotta remember that Mr. Drury is very smart. He comes up and he asks everybody for a list of all the things that they want, everything in the store. So you put it all together, now, and they look at reality of what your end revenues are, and that's where those so-called cuts come from. And to me, that's kind of like a figment of imagination, and it's, it's a very smart way of doing things. So it sounds like there's a lot of work in making cuts, but in my view, you should have started with the available revenue with that, and then filled in behind it. And so I don't think that you understand that a lot of people in this, and I'm going to be doing research over this next couple of months, in this county are hurting. I fortunately am not, I'm pretty, at least so far, I can count on my pension, but you never know what could happen to that depending on the next elections. So the, I would really suggest that you seriously consider moving to the rollback rate in your decisions in September. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. Pastor Watkins, I saw you, if you want to speak.
Yes, sir.
Please say your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Okay, Michael Watkins, eight oh five Summer Road Avenue, Taveri. First, it's good to see Councilman Singer back in this spot there, good to see you, sir. Also, I want to thank the city for, there was a situation on Slim Haywood Road where it's really dark there at night. And so the city did put up two lights, so I want to thank Phil and his department, and whoever else was involved in getting that. I did ride down there last night, and it's still dark in this space in between. So I know you guys from listening, there's a lot of budgets, a lot of issues you all are trying to work out. So that is something to consider, because there's a lot of family, people live down that road, and there's a lot of kids. So at some point, I would hope the city can look at that at night and see there's a curbed road there, and it's dangerous. Even with what's happening, it's better, but I think we do need more lighting in there. So hopefully, somewhere, we can try to do at least a couple more lights on it, but thank you for what you've done. Also, there's something that, to me, I know earlier on in the year, I think with a situation at Ingleham Park, some things had happened, the park was closed, the park has been redone, it looks nice. But we thought, I guess, that that would help with our situation. So what I'm trying to say is this here, I know the chief, I talked with him, I talked with Mr. Drury, and I know there's efforts to try to make the area safer, but I'm still hearing of shootings into areas. To me, from a concerned citizen's mind, there's a lot of shootings going on in our city. And residents have been calling me, saying, hey, Pastor Mike, what's going on? Well, Pastor Mike don't know, because I couldn't even find anything on the news about the latest shooting. And I know the chief is doing his best tonight, I'm sure Mr. Drury is, but I would say this. We need to intensify our efforts with this, because this is getting to be more and more serious. We used to think that, that was always in Orlando or somewhere else, we're having a lot of shootings in this city. And I'm concerned about citizens that could be innocent by standards. And it seems that the people who are doing this, I don't know if they're from out of town, in town, whatever, they seem to think they can do this without, uh, no problem. Or maybe I should say like this, why, why are they so willing to do it here into areas? And I know other cities in the area have had shootings, so I'm not trying to point blame on anybody. But I would say as a council, when we live in that budget deficit, where we have more officers, a bigger budget for it, or whatever the situation may be, this is starting to be serious for us. It's happening way too often in this city. So whatever we can do to kind of deal with this, I think we need to deal with it. It needs to be on the forefront that there's too many people coming to this city, shooting, and I'm concerned for kids, parents, and everybody else. So I actually want to give that some serious consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor Watkins. And real quick, Mr. Drury, in the budget, there's still adding two police officer positions in the current budget.
Correct.
And is body care is still part of this current budget?
Yes.
Okay. And I know that we'll continue to have better meetings, and we'll continue to talk about Mr. Watkins, so.
Yeah, we have another meeting on the twenty-fourth or twenty-sixth, twenty-fourth of September.
September twenty-second.
Twenty-second. We have another, another race innovation scheme.
And is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak? Okay, so we'll go from right to left. Please come forward, say your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Belinda Rink, I live at two sixteen Front Avenue. I know many of you, I grew up in Taveri's. We appreciate everything that you guys do, you're doing a great job, the entertainment center is great, we have a golf cart. We come down almost every day, we come down with our grandson. Like Pastor Watkins, we are terribly concerned about the shootings in Taveri's. We don't hear anything about them, we don't get any communication, except what you see on Facebook, or just people gossiping and talking about it. So we, we like to know what kind of actions are being done, and things that are being done. What kind of collaborations are we doing? Are we collaborating with the churches like we used to? Are we pulling in nonprofits who, who know about these kind of things going on? And I don't know that we need to do it all about race relations, it's just about our community trying to work together. And that's what we want. I don't want people down the road afraid to talk to the police, they're supposed to be our friends, that's the issue. Our people are afraid of their neighbors. And so I don't know what kind of committee show we're doing, or what my husband and I can help do on. We run a business, so we're busy work, those people that never can come because of that. But again, we appreciate what you're doing, but whatever we can do to help, let us know, let the community know. Keeping it all a secret isn't helping, it's just getting the gossip. And it just, just keeps things going, it does not stop them. So I don't know, I'll start attending the meetings and see what I can do to help, and we appreciate as we move forward. But we're bringing a lot of other people in here, we're proving a lot of neighborhoods. And I just think if your city's not safe, you're doing a disservice to everybody. I think Lou mentioned, you know, that we're here for the citizens. But all I've heard today is all about the infrastructure, and the budget, and what are we doing? But what are we doing for our citizens? Sorry, so boss. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that you really like to follow the police, are actively looking into it, can't really correct all active investigations.
I can give you guys a little bit of reassurance, there's an isolated incident between two groups of people. Your normal liberty citizen who's walking downtown is not going to be a target. It's drug-related, between two rides of drug dealers, and they're going back and forth. Warrants have been written, they're in the process, excuse me, being written right now for three of the shooters from the other night. We're working with Eustace in Lake County. We have marshals that are searching for one of the other outstanding warrants who was responsible for the murder in Inglewood. It all stems from that. This isn't something that, I wouldn't feel scared walking my daughter down the street to go to BTW. It's, it's, it's an isolated group of individuals who have any beef with each other. So please know that we're working, I've got officers sitting out there twenty-four hours, seven days a week, right in that area. We're constantly doing traffic with these guys. COVID has kind of tied our hands a little bit with our interaction with the community. We had not faced the basic much as we normally would, but we're doing traffic stops. We're trying to get people with the guns, with the drugs. We're working with Lake County passports, things are being done. But again, I mean, don't feel like you can't be safe in your own home. You're not a drug dealer, you guys aren't out there dealing drugs. These guys that are doing that, that's the life, and they brought it into our town, and we're trying to get it out.
Yeah, I'll just add, this police force of ours is amazing. They are solving crimes, they are making arrests, they are issuing warrants, and they're putting the bad guys in jail. It's a shame that a handful of people moved into town about nine months ago, or ten months ago, and that created all this turmoil for us. But I can tell you this, we know who they are, the police is on it, and they are working with the state prosecutor, forensic investigations. This is going to end, it's going to end very well. What happens in communities, and I've lived in a lot of them, small towns, you, everything's great. Seven years goes by, and then a bad group of people move into your community, a handful, and they create all the havoc. And that's what we've got going on here. What's really cool about having a local police department, what I like about the best of having a local police department, is they know who these people are, and some of you know who these people are. And you know them by name, you know their parents. So we've got officers out there who know what's going on, they're making arrests. It does take time, you know, forensics, go to a lab, you gotta match it up. Prosecutor wants everything the way it needs to be done, judges are involved, jails are involved. But as far as Taveri's doing its part, we've got the best police department in this whole area, I'm telling you. They are on it, they are making arrests, they are finding the evidence, and they are issuing warrants and putting people behind bars. And this thing will be, this thing will be done pretty soon. I'm livid with the amount of patience that we all have to have while, while we go through this. But it will be done soon. That's all I've got to add.
Mr. Drury, Mr. Bill, I believe you're next, if you please say your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Freddie Bill, in five two five West Main in Taveri's. I've known, hey, gentlemen, how were you when you were junior high football? Not that I knew anything about football, but my big football family that's many, many years ago. Couple things, what was the shooting, the shootings I wanted to talk about? And, you know, things are happening at night, you've got the police cars out, but I wonder if you didn't have some officers on the street to, just walking Main Street? You do have people, different clueless and busted tubs and all the other places around. It would hurt to have one or two out, just not all night long, but just walking around seeing people, so that they don't know that you're there. They can see the police cars, but they don't necessarily know that the officer's out walking around. I'd be, let them get to know the people, let them get to know the business owners, because I don't think they know anybody. So that's one concern. Another concern is, is that some of the business owners are afraid to say it. I own two buildings that have Russians in them, and bars. I have noticed that they have noticed that there's quite a few stops as the people are leaving. And it's not that Taveri's police department is stopping them either, it seems to be the sheriff's office that's coming in and stopping them. And I don't know if y'all are working something out with them, or whatever, you know, to help with the DUIs. But I had a gentleman, I came. I came down to my office to write bond, and a lady was out in a parking lot, not knowing what to do. And her significant other basically was stopped, and this guy, the two of them live in Apaca, they wanted to relocate to Taverri. They said that specifically, both of them, to me at two different times. And the concern is, is that as they're out, they were leaving, and they got pulled over because the lights were too high, or whatever. I think, Sarah, you might know a little bit about, I think you were around that night. I don't think you had anything to do with the stop. And this guy is a engineer with Mitsubishi Hitachi. And this isn't just some bum that has had a guy. He's not some bum that wants to move in the area, but this might have stopped it. And I don't have any problem with stopping people for DUIs, but Mountmore once did this a number of years ago, that they would sit outside the bars, and when somebody came out, you know, it's like, well, they crossed the white bar, stop bar. What happened? Who, which one of you do not cross that stop bar as you're going home? Everybody does. But that's a good excuse to stop somebody. And then you just look and start fishing. But if that's all you saw them do, that doesn't mean you're drunk. That means they could be tired and coming home from work in the middle of the night, like me. Now, I haven't been stopped yet. But that's one thing, some of the bar owners are concerned about this. So might want to just check into it. And I think if they got out, they talked to the people. I know Sarah's out a lot. I've talked to her a lot. And, but I think if the officers periodically could stop in, say, is there anything we can do, you know, and if there's any problem, give us a call, and whatever. If they just hit each other and just be seen, it might stop the people from drinking maybe as much as they're doing, or whatever. I think that's about it. And I'm concerned about the young black kids, too. So I never mind. Since he was that big, and he was trying to carry the football for me. So now that I knew what to tell him to do, that's a long time ago. And we don't need anybody else getting shot. White, black, they make any difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. All right. Ms. Goff, and then please come up, say your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm in the applause, I'm with the law firm, I was in Harvard, which is on Main Street, and here in Taverri. I just want to expound a little bit on what we've just covered as, you know, coiling to public concerns. Where is leadership in this? Because this is the first day of the day anyone's even thought about saying, hey, God, look, don't worry. And just because I'm not a bad guy, just because I'm not a drug dealer, those bullets do not have drug user names on them. They are flying, they can go anywhere. They can hit children. I think what Mr. Bell was getting on is some kind of community policing. We've sat by it pretty quiet, but we can't do that anymore. And yes, I think community policing is important and is needed. We need people on the streets. And when someone does come forward as a witness, and they're either ashamed or too afraid, and we don't stand up to that person, we just told everybody not to speak. So if something really needs to be done, and quite friendly, leadership needs to step it up, and talk to people, and tell them what's going on. That's all I can say about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else? For Mr. Serdar? Otherwise, Mr. Serdar, you're the last show. You have three minutes, and I will cut you off, so.
David Serdar, Bloom Park, Florida. 6600 Green Drive, Bloom Park, Florida, 34731. Yesterday was election day. I was just putting signs back from the Lindy Lake, Leesburg, Bloom Park area, you know, candidate, I hope, Sheriff Kaplan, the Lake County Sheriff, Department of Justice, but you know what? A house divided is no house at all. We have problems all over. Wildwood just had a shooting. David Lyons lost his son. David Lyons, a shooter, a football star. I'm David. I play football. You know, it's happened in everywhere. My dad was the principal. He whacked me when I was in college, and, you all got everybody out in school. What are you doing at my ballgames? I play basketball. Paul, you ever come out and I don't know. He got lawyers, doctors, and lawyers, because, well, that's what education does. You know, we got to support our police officers. Right here, this is the county seat all over Lake County. The judges, they have the idiots that come in that are, gee, you what? Well, I've got a press line in every car from the governor. You know, what can you do? We can thank our police officers. When the idiots that are out there, shoot, the bullets fly everywhere. I'm from Chicago, landers, four to two killings a week. You know, it's a terrible time in society. You know, I was with the sheriff last night. He asked if I had an immediate. I was out, you know, things go on, life goes on, leaders leave. And lawyers, I grew up with lawyers. Judges, I grew up with judges. I talked to Prince Castro today, resident and assistant building director of the mayor, up on the dock. You know, cities work together. You work all together. You know, the idiots are out there. You can't stop a neighborhood. In my neighborhood, a six-year-old guy, high enough nut, put gas through the whole house, and lit out parties. And it happened twice in the past five years in different neighborhoods. It's going to happen. We have to fund this, and it takes leaders with police officers to get things done. You know, there are idiots in society. And it's going to get worse. Maybe the time is now to start moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serdar. I didn't have to interrupt you. That was wonderful. Which brings us to reports. Mr. Drury?
Adalon Park is going to have its, uh, August 20th, at 4:00 to 6:00. They'll have their groundbreaking for their project in the charter school parking lot. So if you're available, and it doesn't conflict with your schedule, I will see you at 4 o'clock to celebrate their project. If not, no worries. Thanks. That's all I know.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. Does he know that?
I do have something. This week, the election qualifying closed on Monday, and effective August 17th, at 11:00 noon, the following candidates of office of Taverri City Council and Public Way to be placed on the ballot for the November 3rd municipal election. For seat three, Walter Newhouse Senior and Royce Timmington. Seat five, Lori Pfister and Debbie Steiner. A man of August is qualified, no opposition, for seat one, and will not be placed on the ballot, and is considered to be elected without opposition. Congratulations. Thank you.
All right. Luteen Corsi?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have anything to report?
We're just, we're extra duty. We're done in the problem area right now. If you have any other questions, come.
Use the microphone.
If you have any more questions for Luteen Corsi, I'm sure she would stay after the meeting and address them personally. Mr. Aldrich?
No, just congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Nothing to say.
Thank you. Ms. Booth?
Nothing, ma'am.
Mr. Dillon?
Congrats, ma'am. Not bad at this time.
Thank you. Mr. O'Keefe?
All right.
Mr. Tweedy?
Oh, my.
Jeep?
Thank you, Ms. Houghton.
Just a reminder, for the budget, public hearings will be September 3rd, that's the Thursday after the regular council meeting, and September 12, or, excuse me, September 16. So September 3rd, September 16.
Also, just for clarity, we have a Wednesday meeting on September 2nd, then a Thursday meeting on September 3rd, and then another Wednesday meeting on the 16th.
Correct.
Three meetings next month.
And the budget public hearing will be at 5:05.
Yeah, that's right. We have to, we can't hold the hearing until 5:05. So we usually recess if we need to, and, you know.
Thank you, Ms. Houghton. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes, ma'am. The presentation of the draft of our new comprehensive plan will be on September 2nd. Wednesday meeting, September 2nd.
Waiting for it. Ms. Holt?
Nothing to report. Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Puigis?
First and foremost, I'd like to thank our officers out there. Their eyes are on the line on a daily basis, and that doesn't, you know, I personally appreciate that. I just feel terrible that our city is going through this. The quality of life in our city is, it's a crisis as far as I'm concerned. The protection of our residents, the protection of our law enforcement, and also the economic implications. We've got developments that we approved today of folks wanting to move into this area eventually. They're going to be looking at these crime rates, and this may be something that may be happening for 10 months, a year, but we're going to have negative implications on that, you know, along the way. I'm really concerned. I hope our plan of action works, and if it doesn't, that we fix it. It hasn't been working so far. And I understand there's a lot that goes into it, but I am personally very concerned about it. I know, I've been in Mr. Drury's office twice, quite a few times in the last five days, you know? And I know he's doing what he can. I'm sure the chief is doing as well. But we need some peace, and we need to make sure our residents are feeling comfortable. And as far as, it's a matter of, it's a gang that's doing it, or whatever the situation is, a stray bullet is a stray bullet, and it could get any one of the officers, any one of the residents, and that's what's going to be our problem and our downfall. So I just hope and pray that it's being addressed sooner than later, or we fix it some other way. And I thank you, each one of the police officers in our department. And then, on a positive note, we always need to end with a positive quote. And even if you are on the right track, you will get run over if you just sit there. And that's Lord Rogers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Puigis. Mr. Sager?
I'm just glad to be back, like a person, being part of the council. And congratulations. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sager. Mr. Stevenson?
I'm not going to be so quick with your congratulations. We're brilliant, so. Couple things. Mr. Chisholm, you earned your kills in this today, so.
[laughing]
Mr. Drury, I don't know exactly where this needs to be pointed, but I got a call. I have a friend out in Lake Francis. I got a call talking about the construction, which I think is awesome. I've been out there a few times, and I've seen it, and I think I know what's going on. They don't really know so much, or they appear not to know so much. I can't get my mail. I can't get access. What if police or fire needed to get to my home? They can't even get to my home because of the residential blocks. They are all armed.
We meet with the HOA president on a pretty regular basis, so I know we're doing that. I've been out there and spoke twice now. So I'm surprised that this president isn't aware of everything, but we'll look into it. If you can give me the name of the person, and all of that, we'll go meet with him personally and all of that.
Yes, you asked.
Yeah, no, we're there. I don't feel you're there.
We have.
Daily. I've done at least two presentations of the whole HOA. Maybe this resident's not at those meetings, but maybe we're doing something wrong, too. So we need to look into it.
I told him, I have, I'm not speaking in class, but I told him I have police or fire needed to you.
Okay. If you share me the name of the resident, we'll reach out and see what's going on.
Ms. Sager?
Congratulations. And, yeah, I really don't have anything today, other than all the employees. I love you. These were just hard questions that I needed to, I needed to ask those today, because this way they're on record, and people can read it, and they can see that we all are concerned. Just sometimes it's not easy up here. And I'm glad you're back, Mr. Sager. And I have a looming head behind me. It's hard.
You're staring.
And you're also on the computer, so everywhere I look, you're right there. I'm a rather happy person. Also, shout out to Mr. Clark today for saving the day with Dixie. I'm sure they really appreciate that.
I do, yeah.
But you take credit. But I have nothing else to report, so with no further ado, this meeting is adjourned.